Okay, to start with, let us look up to God in prayer. Let's pray. Our humbly Father and our almighty God, the Creator of all things, the owner of our lives, and the source of blessings. Here we are, Lord. We thank you because we have come this far of our lives because of your divine providence and we can now continue our daily works. We thank you also, oh God, because before we go on with our works, we can spend time with you together, oh Lord, by learning a lesson that will continue to benefit each one of us so that our relationship to each other and to our relationship with you will always smooth and vibrant, oh God. We pray, Lord, to give us wisdom to comprehend this lesson today, oh God, and bless also the others who hasten their footstip, oh Lord, so that they could catch up also our relation, oh God, this day. This is our prayer with so much thanksgiving of hearts in Jesus' name. Amen. Okay, our lesson today is about family, God's perspective on every family. It means that it is God who ordained marriage. It is not our own invention. Marriage is not family and marriage is not our own idea, but it is an idea of a holy God. If marriage is an idea of a holy God, then marriage is holy. If it is holy, then there is no... Ina-tawag nga kumidya-kumidya nga pagminyo, try and error, kontili. It is full of commitment. And as you establish your family, no, sa mga singles o pala-ayam na minyo, when you establish a family of your own, what is your goal of your family? Hinaut nga, kung goal is to glorify God because ang ultimatum ay nintanan nga tong gihimo, it is to glorify God, our Creator. So as we go on with establishing our own family, nanatay goal daan, ok inyo hang is set sa inyo hang partner nga, establish the family, this is our goal. No, ang ato ang marriage may himong Christ-centered, atong family may himong Christ-centered because all in all, and wala tayong lai ng goal, it is to glorify God. So, no mo, nang ato ang ginatawag nga goal sa kining, sa mga marriage applicants dinhe, no, isa ko ang naghatag, ok lecture si Elah, la biblical principle of marriage para kalabanan mo sa mga marriage karoon, mura og kuwan ba ka ng maikas obanta nandiri pero sa spiritual, dako kayo, ok kabhang, lakukaghow ang vacuum. Oh, wala kakabalong nga, kung ang spiritual life maoy bangkrap sa ginatawag nga marriage or family, ah kuwan yon, no, ganito nga trouble ganun family. Okay, so, muna'y mga purpose. So we are now in lesson six. To start with, Ingon Panaya Agden Nash, Ingon Panaya about family and kisulti. He said, na diha sa inyo hang module. He said, "To keep your marriage brimming with love in the cup, whenever you're wrong, admit it." Shut up. Okay, agree ba mo si Angisulti? No, kung para pabiliin, no, nga brimming, no, gawas-gawas ang ato ang kuwan sa maing butang ato ang marriage, di in uban sa gugma, diha sa kap, nga gawas-gawas, no? So, kung sa may kuwan ni anak, ang ginatawag nga substance ni anak, kung ikaw masayo, admit it immediately. Muna ang gine-emphasize na mo, diha sa lecture sa marriage nga, practice magic words. Kung sa mga magic words, yes, ka na mga, "I love you, I care for you, I'm so proud of you." Isa, pa sa mga magic words ka na, "I'm sorry, I was wrong, please forgive me," mga magic words na siya. Kung naan na siya, magic, it means dalit ra, dalit ra moa pier ba, it means abundan. Kung wala na siya, sayop magamay, di niyo pa ipasaylo, ah, magpupit ang konflikhan, pero dako, pero naadain na siya, wala, sito dritso, di ba? So, mauna ang ginatawag nga, ako ang kining magic word. So, whenever you are wrong, admit it immediately, di ba? And whenever you're right, shut up. Eh, tamagig ko, no, dahalagi, ah, wala, wag ihipon, tamotakap, pero wala, ihipon, hindi tabo, kay, gibo-ling maninuon ni mo, ang nasayop. Ang imong gibo-ling, imorapong asawa, wala, di ba? So, tama, no? Ako agree ko sa gino ni Agden Nash. Okay, our lesson today is about essential components of marital intimacy. Essential, sa topa, ng basic, and necessary nga nga mga components sa ginatawag nga very close intimate nga kami niyon, marital intimacy. How about ka ng mga, mga mag-asawa nga, naadri, uban sa abroad, intimate na sila? Physically, not. Pero, una daghan na components sa ginatawag intimacy, atong i-go through karoon. Number one, emotional intimacy. It means we discuss about our feelings. So ikaw, ok imuhang bana, kinahanglan nga ininyohang emosyon intimate. It means nga, ka ng, the closeness created through sharing of feelings. No, ka ng feelings, may tawag, kung sa may mga feelings na'to, okay, ginatawag nga sharing of both likes and dislikes that lead to avoiding conflicts but becomes more intimate. Okay, so, ang isa sa mga nindot nga butang ipractis sa marriage between husband and wife is transparency. Ngano, ngano maging transparent man mo? Wag ko, kaya mo mag-ilhan na, labin na, no, ibinag, uyab lang, tulokabulan, imakabulan, nagminyo da'yon? Kailakas siya sa ehang bataasan, kay ka na raw man naguyab, hinulman, ramang bataasan na na? Ah, pa-impress-impress lang, pero sa realidad na, awan na, nagawas ang bataasan, ano 'yan, mahimahay da'yon, kabalo pakok 'yan na 'yung bataasan, ah, wala na, wala hinatana, di ba? That is why continue ang transparency. No, kanitawag nga, kung saang transparencis tagalog, tama ba ang translation nga, magpakatotoo? Hahaha, transparency, magpakatotoo? Oh, so, ayaw na'to mga hinulman nga mga, mga bataasan, ikuwan na, i-bulgar na din ha, and then, no, isulteni mo. Ang imuhang mga, inyo hang mga likes and dislikes, kung si gusto ni missis himua, ang hindi niya gusto, likahi. Ika po missis, kung saang gusto si mo ba na himua, oh, andil niya gusto, ayapod. So it's simple, di ba? Okay, sharing of getong nga feeling, why? In order to avoid conflicts. Wala, amen, inyo, ka na kuwan, no, ka ng ginatawag nga conflicts, sa manigta, ayun, usahay gamay, rakaayo, gi-exaggerate lang, hangtong dako, ninglaban da'yon, ang ugangan, ang papagmamawa, na komplikado yon. No, ingon ang Biblia. "However, whatever God joins together, let no man put a thunder." Usahay ang magilikanan, o gaungangan, maoy hilungda nga nagbulag ang ilang mga anak, imbes kay matabang sila na mamintin ang ilang relationship, masitel ang problema, mahi no, o 'yung nag-encourage nga magbulag. So, be responsible, di ba? Okay, so, avoid conflict, but the opposite is become more intimate. O, maugini ang gusto sa, oh, a purpose atong pagminyo, intimate, muna'y ginatawagan na nga term of cohabitation. Cohabitation, ka na mag-uban yon, di ba? Kato kung kanta nga, ang gusto ko mahal, sana'y laging sabay tayo, muna ginatinoon na siya, kay intimacy ang ginatawag nga marriage. Okay, second, intellectual intimacy. It means we express our, about our thoughts, mga panghunahula. So, kung sa may pagiging intellectual intimate, of course, no, in a practical way, mo, ni, ikaw, mangita kasi mong kalevel, tanang tao din ha, pwede na mo minyoan? Di ba, pwede na na siya? Pero, kung sa may dapat ato pangitaon, kato kung compatible po na'to, di ba, mara kalevel ta, classmate ba ni mo, press mo kurso, no? Pa sa kurso din ha, lili lang kay, abogado ka, niya, na minyo, ka, ok kining elementary graduate. Kung si pagka, pagka nindot sa inyo hang intellectual anak, lili, no? Di kakashir ang bana, di kasir siyahang asawa, kay, di kagez, layo rakaayo? Wala 'yan 'yung asawa, lili, makakuwan, di kasabot, kung si Angisultis 'yang bana, kay, layo rakaayo, ijkat na dati ni, di ba? Okay, pero preyas mo, press mo kurso. So mali ginatawag nga, tanan pwede, pero pangitaan, imong compatibility. No, the same, press mo kurso, press mo edad, press mo religion, press mo tribo, anindot kayo, di ba? Pero, ok na lelahe mo, ok kurso, okay rapod. Wala 'yan po kayo ang gap sa edad, okay rapod, pero mga eventualities, ano dun 'yung problema. Oh, ka ng, kuwan, ka na ginatawag nga, lahi o religion, lahi o culture, lahi tanan-anan, pwede pero mag-struggle, no? So, naan na sa tuang, ginatawag nga, choice. So muna ang magminyo, lili, kay tira pasagad nga, ah, okay na niyo, okay na niyo, hunahula ah, hunahula ah, kinsanis siya, no? Ka ng, pag commit bitaw niyo nga, for better, for worse, ah na, makuanggud, ka ng, makuanggud ba, wadju kay alanganin, kay nga naman, compatible mong duha. Although, lili na si, it means perfect, compatible, no? Kay mag, depende ng ihipon sa inyo hang, practical nga paghandle sa isa't isa. Ingon pa nila, there is no perfect marriage. Magre mo, okay, perfect marriage? Pero, dina isa ka author, ingon siya nga, there is a perfect marriage. But this perfect marriage will just be found between a blind wife and a deaf husband. Blind wife, di katita. Kung si sayop si ambana, ok bungol nga bana, di kadungog, kung sa intriga batok si asawa. Ah, perfect, di ba? It means nga, mga gagawing butang, di naginuton, gamitan lag magic words, tama na, sitel da'yon, kay nag-sorry na, di ba? Okay, so, muna'y ginatawag nga intellect, intellectual intimacy. Sharing of personal biases and knowing it's a, it's one's love language, okay? Biasis, doon na tayong biasis, di ba? Kung sa may kuwan, ako, kasulte kuwan, kay doon ako ikasin nga psychologist yon, ok isa nga, yahang ihatag na mag-exam, kining mga personal biases. So, sa tao na isa, doon ay tao nga auditory, alvisual, particular siya nakita, napayuban nga auditory, particular siya nadungog. O nga uban, doon ay ginatawag nga kinesthetic, particular siyang nahikap, o ganang isa digital, reasons, reliable reasons. Di niyo basta-basta maconvince, kung doon na kay reason, anak nga, na kuanggud ka ng convincing yon, oh, diyan na siya, utoo. Okay, muna'y mga biases. So, kay managti ayon mo, ni, kung ikaw kuwan, ikaw bana, ang imong asawa is ginatawag siya nga visual siya. Kung duka'y ka uli, no, kung duka'y ka ka uli, ah, yes, kung ang iyong sabot nga alas 8:00, gabi inaan ka, kinhalan pa ni mo, haon kunimo nga alas 8:00, na nakasimubalay, kay nga naman, makampanti yon siya, mawala niya ka kulba, kung makita yu kanya nga buong-buo. Visual mo kuya. Pero, kung imong asawa is auditory, maskin malit ka, tawag ilang, madungog nga imong tingog, istral mo duha, okay na na siya, particular na siya na dumugod. Pero, kinesthetic siya, akin hahalan ka nga emo siyang ihag, nga mahikap yu kanya, kay diha siya makampanti kung yahag 'yung magunitan. Kung digital imong asawa, wala 'yan na late ka, pag-uli, kinahanglan nga napakasalalan, magunahunan na ka, oh, siya kaya ko girasundo lang, na late ko, oh, sa kay, ako, ka na, ma, ka na mutuo yon siya, awa agud, awa agud, mo nagliliit ni convincing siya, ayaw na lang, pangay na lagpasaylo dritso. O magdala na lang kag peace o kering daan. Masubad ang problema, di ba? Muna'y mga biases. O, ang asawa po, kabalo siya sa ang sayo biasis si ambana. Akumisis ba, one time, katawa ko, kay one time, niyong siya sa kuwan nga, pang, love kunimo? What a question. Ingoko ba? Ingoko nga, siempre, wala malay ka musultin ako, huh? Di, ako ang iisulte, I love you ma, wala 'yan 'yung akos. Perteng lipayan niya? Maragnsis ba, pero sa iya, magot particular siya na. So to, dili tan ibaliwala, no, ka na mga love language, biases na'to, importante kay na siya, kinesthetic siya, kinalanimuha, ay, nindot kayo. Mga gagawing butang, pero mauna'y nindot nga ingredients, no, diha sa kami niyon. Okay, so, di rin napunta sa ginatawag nga, ah, ah, napali ay, love language, no, kung sa'kin love language, kining mga quality time, no? Ka ng, sa panah, uban nga love lang, love language nila, ka ng, act of service, number 5 man na siya, act of service, oh, kung nasaliha siya ganahan, oh, ka ng, gusto ni mo siya nga, selbihan ni mo siya, ma'yan love language, wa, siya kasulte ha? Pero, iyan ang isulte, muna'y expression, so mali ingon dyan nga, ah, love speaks louder than word. Wa, kay isulte, sa iya ha, nga I love you, pero ang imong love language, si service yon ni mo siya, muna iyahang kuwan, eh, ikaw, ikaw babae, ay na, ay na, oh, paabot nga miyong si, I love you, ka na 'yung himo, 'yan ni mo, ang nag-service imo, mauna na na siya, i-appreciate na na siya, oh, mga love language siya. Okay, diretso sa spiritual intimacy. It means we open our souls to each other. Kung sa'kin spiritual intimacy, una, have same faith in God. Grabe 'yung po siguro, kung imong bana o rimong asawa, at least, limutuo Ginoo. Kung sa una lang na. So kinhalan nga ikaw, imong asawa, ikaw, imong bana, ka ng, preyas mo nga dunay pagtuo si Ginoo, nagtuo, oh, Diyos. Okay, isa pa, it involves sharing religious belief, if ever, nga, ang manag asawa din ha, dili sila para sa religion, ang ilang himo, hindi sila magdebate, mag-sharing sila, sila mga religious beliefs, and observing religious practices together. May himoon, no, dili kay mag-away o magdebate, kay, ang debate, wala agyo'y, ningdaog sa debate, no, ang ginasya, away misunderstanding. No, pero sharing, ah na, faith, ah na, okay. Wala 'yan, kung sa pag yon, ah, such as praying and attending church together. So, ginatawag nga spiritual intimacy. No, nga, ka ng mamalandong mo sa Ginoo, magbasa mo Bible, mamalandong mo, isa inyong direksyon, kay siya po, nagtuo si Ginoo, ikaw po nagtuo, o ni, nag-discover, sa attribute si Ginoo, mo din, ni Ginoo gamahanan, faithful day kayong Ginoo, loving day kayang Ginoo, forgiving day kayang Ginoo. Mitano, so, muna'y may tabo, nindot kay ininyohang, panag, ah, panag, ah, uban, wala 'yan, ah, sa inyo hang, sa inyo hang kuwan, religion o sa inyong belief mo, ni, di ba? Ah, mo di, oh, di rin, mo di kita maglayo, ah, di ba? No, kay sa magdebate, sumali inyong kuwan nga mo, ni, ah, wala. No, pertengin ang, wa agyo'y, kuwan na siya, kining, kapaiingnan, away yun na siya, oh, may cost, kanunay sa inyong trouble. And then pray together, and then attend, ah, church together. Spiritual intimacy. Dili unta nga, panahon sa domingo, ang nagsimba, asawara, oh, mga anak, inyong papa, ambot, ah, sa padulong. Family yon siya. Family nga, nag-atto mo sa church, nagsimba, di panindot kayo? No, ka ng, ah, muna'y subo, pamalandong nga, kung sa'ay, ang member sa family, ti-sa'ay nagsimba, duha lang ang uban, wala asak ang uban, naras balay, dili uye. Dapat dili 'yung anak, kay nga naman. Panahon sa Sunday, Sunday morning, kay maui kalabanan, halos no, nga, wag simba. I am talking with the general anak. Ang Ginoo is everywhere, omnipresent, ang ala anak sa theology, omnipresent, he is everywhere. Pero, during Sunday morning, wa, ang Ginoo wala, although naasist na lang balay, pero ang Ginoo, nag-expect siya, nga wa kasi mong balay, tuwa ka sa church, nagsimba. Kay mo, na regular, regular appointment na'to, si Ginoo, ka ng Sunday, regular appointment. It means wala mag-expect ang Ginoo during Sunday, nga narakasi mong balay, kung si magpanghimol din ha, ang expectation tuwa ka dito sa simbahan kay, muna inyong regular appointment, ka na nga dapat, no, magkuwan mo, no, magmeet mo nga duha. Nakaron, wala ka dito, indyan 'yung mga Ginoo, nga mo, na may regular appointment, di ba? So, ko ng family, ingon anak siya, nga buong-buo, as family nag-atto, di man nindot kayo, papa-mamamang anak, silatan komplito, nag-atto sa church, pagkanindot ka kayo, no? So, ang spiritual intimacy, pagkanindot lang tawon, intimate, kayo spiritually, antibok family, kay intak, nga nag-atto dito sa sa church around pagsimba, pagtaig, pagpasalamat sa Ginoo. Expression na sa pagpasalamat sa Ginoo, ka na magsimba ta. No, nagdawa, tagswilo, ano, biernes, grabe atong swilo, dakot nagwa, wala 'yan, pag sa Sunday, wag tamu simba, wag ang pasalamat si Ginoo. Di ba, di ba, ungrateful kayo, di ba? No, pero na ato dito, expressions pasalamat, di malipay ang Ginoo. Okay, spiritual intimacy. Ikaw pa is social intimacy. It means we spend times together. Muna'y gi pangit na karoon, isa sa love languages is quality time. Na kinahanglan nga, ikaw, ok imong asawa, doon nagyo'y, regular nga, regular nga, mag-date mo ba, regularly? Lehian na sa anak, no? Kung sa'is kabisi mo, ganoon, wala as passing. Pero dapat na na siya, once in a while, ka ng, social intimacy. No, enjoying time with each other or doing things together, intimacy na siya. And to visit places during day of vacation and any leisure moments. Muna ang pag-energize, kung nagakaloya ang relationship, pero maghimuan ang mga kuwan, mga ah, pagkuwan, kining ginatawag nga spending time together, then mauna'y maka-energize balik sa marriage. Okay, and the last is sexual intimacy. We share our bodies together. Ingon pa sa First Corinthians chapter 7 verse 4, no? Mauni ang ginatawag nga, ah, kuwan kayo, no, nga, pag-address ni Pablo sa ginatawag nga sexual crisis, no, sa mga marriage, sukad pa sa una, naanaligi ni sa una daan, no, hakod karoon. Ingon pa dinhe sa First Corinthians 4:7-4. "The wife's body does not..." Ka ng, basta magminyo na ang lalaki babae, muna ni may tabo. "The wife's body does not belong to her alone but to his, to her husband. And the husband's body does not belong to him alone but to his wife." Muna'y ginatawag nga, one flesh, one plus one equals one. Kay ang duha na imong isa, one flesh, kung si significance one flesh? Para sa mano, isan mo kaunod, kung si significance ano? Buti pasabot, mauni, bana, sumbagay imong asawa, laparuhay imong asawa, kung sa'ay actual na tabo, imong gisumbag, gilaparo ang imong kaugalingon. Imuhanan ng lawas. Doon na ba't tao, nga nagpasakit siyang kaugalingon? Ingon pa sa Biblia sa Ephesians 5, "He who loves his wife, love his own." So, kung imuhang kulat tao, imong asawa, ikaw mismo, wakay respeto si imong kaugalingong lawas. Ano 'yung magipasakitan imong asawa? That's the significance of one flesh. Okay, so, it is one of the most important dimension of healthy marital intimacy. Kato kung isulte na kugin na nga, kung kasi doon na siya, doon na, sa kaksychologist, dito pa sa Manila, doon na siya 'yung mga councilist, o kung 'yung mga councilist kalabanan na sa three to five and six years nga nagminyo. Kala magong mga honeymoon stage, wala pa na nga mga crisis. Pero, diha na sa ka ng real life na, three, five, six years anak nga marriage, diha ng mga crisis usahay. Grabe ang away dito, mga magta'yon, gaya 'to siya ha, una, history niya ang lalaki, pam, maki-bulag ko, kay, 'yan mo ni, akong asawa, man, daghan kayo, pertengin. Wala 'yan ang asawa po, gi-interview. Gi-interview, maki-bulag ko sa kung bana ma'am, kay mo, ni, ah, grabe kuya kayo, ang historya. Pero, pagduha na sila, dina sa'ko ang kasi nga, "Sir, ma'am, how is your sex life?" Nga tulala, silang duha. Kay tuwa, di ay dito ang problema. Kining, there is a First Corinthians 7:4, 7, ah, chapter 7 verse 4. "The wife's body does belong to her alone," wala 'yan. Ang five ani, ang verse five ani, ang isulte niya sa verse five, mauni siya oh, "Do not deprive each other." It means, imong i-deprive, no? Ang 'yang right, i-deprive ni mo, ang 'yang right nga mga ayaw, i-deprive ni mo, kung sa manas siya, negligence of your marital duty. Pero, ano na may pahit tabo ni anak, muna'y ginatawag nga crisis. Okay, so, muna'y ginatawag nga, ah, kuwan, kining ginatawag nga problema sa kami niyon, kay, 'yung palihak, kung, kung, di na siya masulbad, maoy cause sa trouble. Okay, and then, ah, ingon pa sa mga psychologists uban, "The most resolved, the most resolved matter in marriage is your sex life." Kay kung ka na ang resolved matters sa inyo hang marriage, no, ka ng problema nga way bugas, may kwarta, sayo, raka'yun, solbaron. Pero, kung sa'yo ka dagdag kwarta, tanan-anan, ka na siya wala masulbad, sige yon mo, oh, away. Do you agree? According to psychologists, dili na'to, muna'y, muna'y isulte. No, mauna'y na nga, ka na tinood, bitaw nga, kanta nga, kantinood on yon ng kanta nga, kahit maputi na ang buho ko, dapat ina na gidi ay. No, maintain ang, tawag nga, sexual intimacy. Ano man, tunggut kay, mauna ang ginatawag nga, ah, kuwan sa Ginoo, ka ng, design si Ginoo, di ba? Sex is God's gift for husband and wife. Ang problema lang, kay karong panahon na, kining butanga, gift sa Ginoo for married people only, gi-abuse na karoon ng mga panahon na. Unta, exclusive ramaning butanga sa mga married people. Pero, ang problema karoon, pertengin na yon, no, ka ng, gi-abuse pagayo. Pero, kita nga, dunay kahalok si Ginoo, nagtuo si Ginoo, we have to abide, no, sa iyahang nga balaod o siyang polo, kay nga naman, ang Ginoo matagpug reward, kaya'to. Labin na siyong kami niyon, continue to be faithful with your spouse, no? Gracias si Ginoo, wala 'yan. Tanan, diha, no, ihatag imong best, ka naman, ang goal is to glorify God. Ang ato ang kami niyon. Okay, so, derakotob, ang ato ang lesson, karamihan ka doon na tay na gets, oh, nakuha nga mga lesson, alang sa mga minyo na, ok advanced course sa mga ulit tao pa, di ba? Let's pray. Thank you, oh God, for the lesson we have learned today. Yes, Lord, we thank you for giving us right and proper instructions, oh God, concerning marriage, oh Lord, and establishing a family. We agree, oh God, and we believe that marriage is not our own idea or invention, but it is the idea of the Holy God. It is your idea, oh Lord, and when we get married, oh God, we participate in your plan and will in our lives. So, Lord, we are blessed people as we come to this, ah, ah, in this matter, oh Lord. And I pray, oh God, to all of us who are married already, continue to bless our marriage, oh God. And also, Lord, to those who are planning, Lord, to get married, I pray, oh God, that make themselves prepared, oh Lord. And all our goals, oh God, for our marriage and our family is to glorify your name, oh Lord. That is our prayer, oh God, and now, Lord, we pray for your people, the legislators, Lord, who are, who will be doing, oh God, their sessions today. We pray, oh God, for your wisdom to govern each one of them, to come up with a right decision, oh Lord, for the, ah, for, ah, for the continuous progress of our municipality, oh God. And bless also our visitors today. We pray that also, Lord, their needs, oh God, will be addressed, oh Lord. Guide us always, and we claim, oh God, your protection and your blessings, to all epilenyus, oh Lord. This is our prayer in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. And good morning, Satanang.
Mga kababayan ang pambansang awit ng Pilipinas.
Please be seated. I'd like to request our Madam Secretary for the roll call.
Okay, good morning, Tetchan, everyone, and welcome to the sixty-first regular session. Mister Chair, with the presence of the eight legislative members, there is the, there is a corum.
Okay, considering that there are eight members present, the Chair would like to declare that there's a corum. Mister Floor Leader, for the adoption of the order of business.
Mister Chair, I move for the adoption of the order of business for today's regular session.
Okay, any second to that motion?
I second, Mister Chair.
Okay, Julie seconded by the Honorable Garcia. Discussion, any amendments, objection, revving and the motion is hereby approved.
Mister Chair, at this juncture, we have visitors, but before we will accommodate them, may I move for the suspension of the rules?
Please motion to suspend the rules? Okay, Julie seconded, rule suspended to accommodate our visitors for this morning.
Privilege motion, Mister Chair, may I move that this chair be relinquished to the Honorable Wenefredo Chong?
Okay, thank you, Honorable Teralba, in me recognize our regular floor leader, the Honorable Wenefredo Chong, good morning, sir. Okay, first on the list, Mister Floor, for the, for our visitors, sir.
Honorable Chair, we have our first visitor here, in person of Jonathan Tagalgun.
I think, Mister Floor, ah, our visitor, Mister Jonathan, is included in the order of business for today's regular session. Like to acknowledge, Mister Floor, the presence of Honorable Diane Catalunya. Good morning, ma'am.
Honorable Chair, since our visitor here are all applicant for PNP.
Okay, okay, so may we proceed with the privilege, sir, Mister Floor?
Yes, anybody from this honorable chamber who wish to avail the privilege hour, please raise your hand.
Okay, anybody would like to avail of their privilege hour? I think no one would like to avail, Mister Floor Leader, may we proceed with the reading of the minutes of the previous session?
Honorable Chair, I move to dispense the reading of the minutes of the previous session.
Okay, there's a motion to dispense with the reading, the minutes of the previous session, any second to that motion? Julie seconded by the Honorable Garcia. Discussion, any objection, revving and the motion is hereby approved.
Honorable Chair, I move for the approval of the minutes of the previous session.
Okay, again, there's a motion for the approval of the minutes of the previous session. Julie seconded by the Honorable Alapil Mohammed. Discussion, any amendments, any corrections, errors that you have observed? Objection, revving and the motion is hereby approved. Madam Secretary for the reference of business.
Okay, for the reference of business calendar and first reading, under the proposed ordinance, we have drop ordinance number one hundred twenty-eight of Honorable Glenn Ian Sabion. An ordinance declaring G Ferrari Street, Barangay Poplasyon, Epi, Sampanas, Bugay, as one-way flow vehicle. Make clear traffic passage from G Ferrari Street, corner San Juan Street to G Ferrari Street. Corner Magsay Say during peak hours of class days from Monday to Friday, six thirty to seven AM, eleven to twelve PM, and three to five PM.
Honorable Chair, I move that this drop ordinance number one to eight be referred to Committee on Rules and Ordinances.
Okay, refer this matter to the Committee on Rules and Ordinances.
Other communications, we have here pertinent papers of the following applicants requesting for resolution endorsing their application to the PNP. We have Jesse Ladion Aragon of Tawai, Jonathan Gumiala Tagalugan, Tagalugon. Of Lower Epi Heights, Algerico Arenda Diana of Kaparan. Ria Grace Sibido Cruz of Apertangi, and Ray Mart Corchita Hichanueva, Hichanueva Veterans Village.
Okay, so what's the pressure, everybody, Mister Floor Leader?
PNP applicant, please approach the rose room one by one and introduce yourself.
Mister Chair, I move to dispend.
Okay, rule suspended to accommodate our applicants. Okay, kindly introduce your name.
Good morning, ma'am, sir, I am Jesse Ladion Aragon, ah, licensed criminologist. I graduated at Sibugay Technical Institute Incorporated. Ako po ay nakatira sa Prugbangkal, Tawai, Ipil, Sambongga, Cibugay. At dito po ako upang humingi po ng tulong po sa inyo, ma'am, sir, para makakuha ng ad hoc, upang kami po ay maka proceed sa PNP, para maka balang araw ay magkita niyo din kami dito na makapagserybisyo sa bahay nito.
Okay. Are there any queries, clarifications to Mr. Aragon?
Honorable Chair?
Yes, Honorable Dangpala.
Mr. Aragon, I just would like to ask if you are a registered voter of Barangay Tawai?
Yes, ma'am, I am a registered voter.
Okay, that is all.
Okay, thank you. Any more? The Honorable Juan Pablo Nuega.
I'm mama si ano, Darrel?
Delete, sir.
Tawai, Aragon. Okay.
Okay, any more queries? If there's none, so may we proceed with the next applicant, Mr. Tagalogun of Lower Ipil Heights.
Hello. Good morning po, ma'am and sir. By the way, I am Jonathan Gumiala Tagalogun and 24 years of age and currently I am living at Porogrin Hills, Barangay Lower Ipil Heights, Ipil, Sambongga, Cibugay. I am a Licensed Criminologist and I passed the board exam last April 2023. And currently nag-aapply po ako ngayon sa RRS Unit 9, Sambongga City, for Attraction Cota for PNP. Andito po ako ngayon upang makahingi ng ad hoc recommendation para makaposid po kami sa PNP application.
Okay, so I'd just like to ask if are you currently employed or ga-apply lang sa kwan?
Ga-apply pa, sir.
So wala pakaitrabaho ka rin?
Wala pa, sir.
Okay, are there any more queries, more clarification? So if there's none, next applicant, Mr. Algerico Arenda Diana from Barangay Kaparan.
Good morning, ma'am and sir.
Before the Mr. Diana, I'd like to acknowledge the presence of the Honorable Sheriff Mazin Hasim. Good morning, sir. Okay, you may proceed.
Good morning, ma'am and sir. By the way, my name is Algerico Ayay Diana. I'm graduated at Medeney College, Ipil, Incorporated. I am a Registered Criminologist, 25 years old. Andito po ako ngayon, ma'am, kasi kasalukuyan po kami nag-aapply sa PNP. Tapos isa sa mga documentary requirements na hinihingi ay iyong ad hoc resolution or recommendation.
Okay.
Kinakailangan po namin na, sir, ng inyong tulong para makakuha ng ad hoc recommendation, sir.
Okay. Any questions, clarification? The Honorable Diane Catalunya?
Sir Chair, yes, good morning.
Yes, go ahead.
Sir Taga Disa Ka?
Taga Kaparan Ipil, Sambongga, Cibugay.
Pero kaybaw ka mangdisaya?
Oo.
Okay, anymore? Okay, wala na?
Are you a registered voter of Kaparan?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I think they have submitted all the needed requirements and have been screened by the Secretariat, so it's understood that all the applicants were here this morning, are registered voters of their respective barangays. Okay, and any queries, clarification? So if there's none, next applicant, Ms. Ria Grace Sebido Cruz from the, from Barangay Upper Pangi.
Good morning, ma'am and sir. I'm Ria Grace Cruz. I'm from Upper Pang, Ipil, Sambongga, Cibugay. I'm 26 years old, single, and I graduated from Dr. Aurelio Mendosa Memorial Colleges and I am a licensed teacher. At andito po kami ngayon, sir, para kumuha ng ad hoc para sa paggamit sa pag-apply ng PNP, sir.
Licensed teacher but not yet teaching?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so any queries, any more? Queries, clarification?
Honorable Chair?
Yes.
Um, iyong mama si Kunsial, Sarapangi?
Auntiko po, sir.
Auntiko. Thank you, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Honorable Nuga. Any more? Clarification, ready? So if there's none, so thank you, Ms. Cruz. Next applicant, Mr. Remart Corbita Hichanova from Barangay Veterans Village.
May muntag sa tanan, ako ay si Remart Corbita Hichanova, gikan sa Barangay Veterans Village Ipil. Ni graduwarko sa Western Mindanao State University Ipil Campus. Sa kurso nga BSc, major in Biological Science. Og napul kompasser, 29 years old, og applicant po sa PNP. Ma'am, sir, niya ko karondori para mangayon sa inyong hang tabang para ma-indor sa kapangayon og ad hoc recommendation para sa mong requirement sa PNP. Og gato lang, ma'am, sir, dagan kayong salamat.
Okay, are you a member of Cibugay Non Eagles Club?
Yes, kuya.
Okay, kuya. Any more queries, clarification?
No more, Mr. Chair. May we request the Chairman on the peace and order, the Honorable Wenefredo Chong?
Okay, so thank you, Mr. Hichanova. Okay, the Honorable Chong, you may please kindly do the honor of endorsing their request.
Honorable Chair, I move to pass a resolution endorsing the pertinent papers of the, of the following applicants, namely Jesse Ladion Aragon, Tawai, Jonathan Gumiala Tagalogun of Lower Ipil Heights, Algerico Arenda Diana of Kaparan, Ria Grace Sebido Cruz of Upper Pangi, Remart Corbita Hichanova Veteran Village, to the, to the Philippine National Police, for training.
Okay, it has been moved and Julie's seconded by the Honorable Toralba. Any further discussion? Amendments, objection? The motion is hereby approved. Next item, back to order, session back to order.
Under item B, we have here duly endorsed from the HRMO, the appointment papers of Mr. Edmundo Sumatra, appointed as Municipal Government Department Head One or the Municipal Economic Enterprise Manager One, with salary grade 24, step one, effective September 1, 2023, requesting for concurrence for so one two, section 443, paragraph D of Republic Act 7116.
Okay, um, what's the pressure of the body for the concurrence of Mr. Edmundo, Edmundo Di Sumatra?
Honorable Chair?
Yeah, yes, the Honorable Dangpala.
May we request Honorable, uh, Mr. Sumatra to speak herself, hisself?
Okay. Okay, are requesting the presence of Mr. Sumatra to be at the rostrum?
Good morning, everyone. Uh, dili ko ma-apply pagka-police. I'm here for the scheduled concurrence of my appointment as the, uh, Municipal Government Department Head of Economic Enterprise of Ipil and hopefully the full support from your, uh, the Sangguniyang Bayan is be with me. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, the, um, Mr. Sumatra, please give us a brief, uh, your brief plans. Once you're concord as the department head of the Economic Enterprise.
Uh, that's the, uh, primary function of my, uh, being the department head of Economic Enterprise is for the, uh, the, the plan of the order, you know, as we always say the problem in the market and likewise the, uh, kadaghanan sa tuang, kalihu kan dia is sako agid madres, you know? And by the next few months, siguro ang katung mga plano nga kuwan, uh, namu sa, ato ang merkado, ma-implement and hopefully, uh, kanang tanang andres na to karoon is, uh, kanang tanang problema is madres. And by the way, uh, karong next week, our plan together with the Ipil Central Market Association will be going to Maramag for the benchmark and the cross-learning process para makita na to, uh, unsagud ang best practice dito sa mga negosyante sa merkado. And that's one way of, uh, nga sila mismo maka sinati nga dili reday trabaho sa taga ilcio ang magkuwan sa, magmitis sa tuang merkado, kundili appeal ang mga stakeholders. Kay responsibilidad mapula sa mga negosyante. Ang amua mine is for the implementation of whatever the local government will be, uh, ma-apply na to sa tuang munisipyo.
Okay, um, considering that your appointment, you know, as a full-fledged department head, as the head of our Municipal Economic Enterprise Manager, it's good to hear that, um, for a fresh start, you're going to the Municipality of Maramag for benchmarking and to observe their best practices, you know? So we have known and we have heard so much about the Municipality of Maramag, especially their public market. So hopefully, you know, uh, it could, um, makabot na to, sa ma-implement na to, you know? Di lang kay mag-benchmark na ito, mulingkod, but we could also implement, uh, the best practices of Maramag and might as well, we could copy, emulate, or replicate. Replicate or, um, if we could do better than the Municipality of Maramag. So before your concurrent, siguro, as the head of the Municipal Economic Enterprise, sayo't ta, sukan pakaniadto, dili gigan ang daghang kay, uh, usas mga pinaka-problemadong, uh, department, you know, in terms of, siguro, mga rentals, collection, so, and also we're looking forward for the cityhood of this municipality nga dili gigan mostly, you know, the generated income ang atong munisipyo. So pwede may mangayon og statement gicanimo nga kung unsagud, merag assurance nga ato iyong ma-perform ang ato ang, uh, position as the department head of this, uh, Municipal Economic Enterprise?
Yes, sir. Uh, first, uh, with the, with the collaboration of the BPLO and the Treasurer's Office, we have started the, the collection to increase by way of serving and the amonggi bisitahan talan ang mga negosyo, nighttime and daytime, especially katung, ganas ato night market, you know? Kay dagan kay ito mga bisan mga tudlos-tudlos, which, uh, potential for our collection to increase kay, there are, there are business nga bisan ginagmay tuod pero wala sila nakabayad. And we are also, uh, we are also having our, uh, daily meeting with our market collectors kay ang kalabanan sa itong mga market collectors karoon, bili, kwan kay sa, kaning, uh, dili kay sila mo exert og effort to, to reach or to hit their target, which they are only, kanang, kwan kay sila nga, ah, nakakolekta na ko, which we, we found out nga ang mga collectors, bastantilang contento lang sila nga makakolekta above sa kuwan, usahay gani, sure pasaya sweldo na to, sila kadadlaw. And that's one, one way of, one way of increasing the collection katung amos nagigian. Three nights may nag-operate sa, uh, ato ang, uh, night markets sa poblasyon. And likewise with those, uh, uh, collectibles and delinquents sa raw ABCD and sa tuang pasalubong, we have already served and collected some, which, uh, among himo.
Okay, so again, I'd like to, in behalf of the Sangguniyang Bayan, we'd like to give also our assurance to work closely with the Municipal Economic Enterprise and also might as well our, uh, chairperson, Committee on Market and Satterhouse, you know, nga maghangiumin, you know, nga tinabangaylanta, you know, for, uh, mga sulban na to, ang mga kinataba, mga problema diya sa atong public market.
Napul kui kwan sir sa tuang kuwan, sa ako ang boss sa Committee on Market.
Okay.
And as I remember, Counselor, uh, Val Inupero, we, huh, from, from his word, "We from Sangguniyang Bayan is just waiting for you to whatever help you need, just approach us."
Yes.
And sigurado nga, magsigi ganimio kita ni Kunsial Toralba.
Okay, so, thank you. So we'll do the honor, passing the resolution?
Uh, it is our fervent hope, at least we'll be expecting that you will actually really boost the economic condition of our local government unit of IP. So with this, Honorable Chair, I move to endorse the appointment papers of, no, I move to concord the appointment of Mr. Edmundo Di Sumatra as municipal, as Municipal Government Department Head One, Municipal Economic Enterprise Manager One, salary grade 24 one, effective September 1, 2023.
Any second to the motion?
Second.
Seconded, unanimously seconded. Discussion? Any amendments, any objection? Yes. Discussion?
Aduna lang koi. Buktana sa tuang, uh, ni Mr. Sumatra, pro duga-duga in ang mga negosyada sa market, you know? As Pindiro Assistant, uh...
Market Supervisor, sir, 2008 to 2016. Market, uh, the Assistant from 2016 to today.
So are you, are you familiar with the, kanabitan kuwan bayan sa? Na, namatay guidelines, in how to run the market, ano, medo? Di ba medo Municipal Economic Development Office?
Yes, sir.
Namatay guidelines, ano?
Mandate.
Oo. So I would like to request, Mr. Sumatra, to, kaya mora nag, mora nag-bibol ni mo na? Ay, mo lang kuwan siguro, kanang, uh, imaster, master mo. I understand one of the requirements sa medo, to run medo, is to submit to us, pro simi annual. Simi annual, uh, financial statement. In order for the Sangguniyang Bayan to, to press or to assess whether medo is a...
Gaining.
Gaining, uh, makaginansya ba? Kay understand that, uh, ang medo, pila, pila ba kabok ang sako sa medo? One is a...
Slaughterhouse.
Slaughterhouse.
Uh, market.
Market.
ITTC and...
IBT, including the cemetery?
Public cemetery. Public cemetery.
Public cemetery.
Regarding sa public cemetery, sir, ato apan ang ikuwan sa Mayor's Office kay ang tuli, ang ako unan na siya nakita nga, after sa burial, daily na na to makita ang mga kuwan na ang mga records naaramog sa Treasurer's Office.
So, I hope the
Pero ato na siya makuanan, sir, kay mo kulaburit ko sila?
Ang gusto may bao, may bao na mo ta siguro. Like for example sa Slaughterhouse, there should be separate karabang financial statement, statement sa Slaughterhouse
Na, na na, sir, separate na siya.
Market, na separate financial statement sa IBT, kung maguparita sa IBT, there should be separate financial statement and all other sakop with your department, ipagkuwan na 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 you should consolidate all the financial statement. Para ma tanan na to, ma klaro rin na to nga, whether medo is a
Yes, sir. Regarding sa collection na na, sir, is different kuwan mga ginasya. Pero usaragika kuwan na, ang Treasurer's Office mo igahimo sa mga kuwan, kay everyday nga remitman ang ato ang medo sa kuwan sa Treasurer's Office, sila ang ka-control sa mga financial kuwan, statement. Pero tagaan po minila o mga reports during sa kuwan din. Kanang request nga financial statement, sir, copy partners na to, muhatag na to para sa Sangguniang Bayan.
So, unsa may report na yun na to sa Treasurer?
Treasurer, kanang daily kuwan na mo, sir, day na mong monthly nga mga accomplishment. Kuwan na ginasya?
Kaya diwa, diwa ho kolekte dide, Slaughterhouse, market, tanan-tanan na is, it's the Treasurer?
No! Na, among mga kolektor siya, sir, na kolektor siya na semua.
So, you mean to say that the kolektor are under your kuwan?
Na, ang mga kolektor under sa amua, pero ang ang revenues padlung yapo sa Treasurer's Office.
So, whatever kuwan, report nga dito doon na mo
Nami, kopya.
So, you can also make
Na, kanang kopya na mo, sir, amua na ginakuwan, ginapay and then after sa kuwan na pag-month end, daily na nila makukuwan da yun, kami na nami initial nga kuwan. Kaya sila magyapuwan na muhatag sa kuwan din, dito na mo makumpara kung asan is sulod ang amo ma-collection kay namutay collection na kuwan is from Missilanyos, karamisilanyos, samu na talan mga parking. Ang kuwan, napu collection sa kolektor diya sa market, nga gika sa market pero muhulog sa general fund.
Okay, kanalang, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Honorable Chair?
Yes, honorable lang palang.
Ah, sir, po yet?
Yes, ma'am.
Ah, we all know that the role and function of a medo manager, daily lang kay naka-focus sa market. And it doesn't also focus on the financial side. But first of all, kinahang lrapod nga, lantawon pod na to, not only sa market, daily lang kay it involves the Slaughterhouse, the ITTC, the cemetery. So, I would suggest to please revisit the sanitation code because no ang sanitation code na to, it involves also with the sameong pagpadagan as the medo manager. Makita ni mo din ha, sa marapod sa gika ingon ganihan ni Honorable Ramos, may mo rapod ni mo biblia when it comes to implementation of the services sa toang LGU IPEL. So, daily lang ta maglantaw sa financial aspect no, mulantaw pod ta sa toang serbisyo sa katawan, sa lungsod sa IPEL. And nakita na kuwan, dagang pod tag mga businesses nga dagang violator sa sanitation code na to. And please do to revisit this sanitation code, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, anywhere? More discussion? So, amendments, objection? Hearing na, the motion is hereby approved. So, congratulations, Mr. Sumatra.
Thank you, sir, thank you mga Consial. And for the last 15 years, maka abut na yung kudiri.
Congratulations.
Praise the Lord.
Congratulations, congrats. So, Mr. Flor Leder?
Honorable Chair?
Yes.
Honorable Chair?
Yes, uh, Mr. Flor Leder.
I hope for recess, Honorable Chair.
Okay, recess for 15 minutes.
Senak, senak mam? Sabi ni mam. Ah, okay, okay. Araus berituan.
K annual budget for calendar year 2021-2023 barangay Gituan be refer to committee on appropriation.
Refer to committee on appropriation.
Item D, Julie endorsement the mayor's office, a copy of the Mowa to be entered into by and between LGE Pil and Marian College for the training and affiliation of their students.
Mr. Flor.
Honorable Chair, I move that this be referred to committee on appropriation and ordinance.
Rules? Rules? I think for their... Resess for two minutes. Hello, hello. Okay, back to order, Mr. Flor. Next item, Madam Sekretari.
Okay, item E, we have here the Julie endorsement the mayor's office, a copy of the Mowa to be entered into by and between LGE Pil and Tagom Cooperative for the Salary Loan Facility to Regular Employees, elective and appointive officials.
Rules?
Honorable Chair, I move that this be referred to committee on rules.
Okay, refer to committee on rules.
Item F, Communication from the Mayor requesting for an amendment of SB Resolution Number 6/310/2023 dated June 21, 2023 from Resolution endorsing the two barangays of Efil as participants to the 2023 Sustainable Livelihood Program or SLP of the DSWD, barangay Magdaup for the bottled sardines products and Timalang for fresh miki making products too. Resolution endorsing barangay Timalang consisting of two associations or subsistence livelihood for fresh miki making production and agricultural farming as the proposed participants of the 2023 Sustainable Livelihood Program or SLP of the DSWD Efil.
Okay, I think they're all done pala. Would you like to do the honor?
Yes, Honorable Chair. This is because the barangay Magdaup refuse to accept the Sustainable Livelihood Program. They have other options of a kind of livelihood. So Honorable Chair, may I move for a resolution amending resolution endorsing the two barangays of Efil, Sambuanga Cibugay as participants to the 2023 Sustainable Livelihood Program of the DSWD barangay Magdaup for the bottled sardines products and Timalang for fresh miki making products too, a resolution endorsing barangay Timalang consisting of two associations or subsistence livelihood for fresh miki making, making production and agricultural farming as the proposed participant of the 2023 Sustainable Livelihood Program of the DSWD in Efil.
Any seconded motion? Julie seconded by honorable Masin Hasin. Discussion? Any amendments to the amendment? Objection? Hearing of the motion is hereby approved.
Item G, Julie endorsement the mayor, copy of the deed of donation to be entered into by and between LGE Pil and the following to wit from Dep Ed Efil District for the 35 pieces trash bins to the Philippine Coast Guard for the donation of the following supplies two units lifeboat ring with reflector, two units pine board, two pieces megaphone, five pieces searchlight, four rolls rescue rope, two units 12 volts car battery, six units handle radius and 10 units life jackets. Number three, Samseriko Two for the 10 units communication radius.
Okay, who will do the honor? But before passing our such a resolution for this matter, may we have our representative coming from the LDRR Mo, Mr. Raymond Hingo? Motion for the suspension of the rules to accommodate Mr. Hingo?
Move for suspension of the rule, Honorable Chair.
Okay, rule suspended. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Hingo.
Hello. Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the Sangguyang Bayan. With regard to the deed of donation that was submitted by our honorable mayor. Those items, those rescue tools and equipment was allocated, the fund was from the local DRR fund. So during the meeting, the local DRR council proposed for that items to be given by the following agencies. So during the receiving of that, that items, ako magwi nakareceive goods from the treasures office. So ihatag banguna sa ilaha. So aku para mawahalapod sa kuwan naka-MR sa kuha. So maunang, akuas siyang ipapasahan ng deed of donations. Though wala pa na siya nahatag, pero ipahimuan nalang yunakudahan siya ang deed of donation para during sa turnover ceremony mapapirmahan ako ng ang deed of donations. Na come up na siya ng mga ihatag tungod kay, for example, sa Samseriko Two. Ni come up during the meetings nga, ganong dilis sila dahil makatubag during, during naay mga concerns with naay mga fire incidents. Naay mga concerns ang ato mga, wala sila mga communication radius maunang ilang concern. So it was come up during the meeting and approved by the council nga tagaan sila ang mga radius. And for the Dep Ed, ang kanang 35 trash bins tungod kay 35 schools manana including the elementary and secondary. Ilang concern po is the proper disposal of their waste or their garbage. So muna iappropos sa council nga matagaan sila og tagsa-tagsa nga katung trash bins nga katung naikabar na kuiligit dahil dilis na siya kung tumban na siyang mauopen. So dako-dako dako dako puto siya. And then for the Coast Guard, since partner na to sila during response operation, nagpropos po sila ang katung mga needed nilang mga equipment sa ilaha. So matung mga life jacket, naay lifebuoy ring, naay rescue rope and katupung naasili radio og flashlight. Mr. Chair?
Okay, so any more clarification? Claris? Okay, thank you, Mr. Hingo. Ah, yes.
Your request for addition di sa kanin mga units.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Hingo.
Your Honor, it was during the council meetings that ni come up ng mga, mga request and it is also written sa mga minutes nga naasili ma-request for that mga items.
Okay, I think there is none. Okay, thank you, Mr. Raymond Hingo.
Honorable Chair? Back to...
Okay, back to order.
Honorable Chair, I move to pass a resolution approving the deed of, deed of donation to be entered into by and between LGU Efil and the following to wit, Dep Ed Efil District, Philippine Coast Guard and Samseriko Two.
Okay, any seconded motion? Julie seconded by honorable Noiga and your work Catalunya. Discussion? Any amendments? Objection? Hearing of the motion is hereby approved. Okay, for the authority, Mr. Flor, authorizing the honorable Mayor Annabel C. Olegario to enter?
Honorable Chair, I move to pass a resolution granting the authority to Honorable Mayor Annabel, Annabel Olegario.
Okay.
To sign the deed of donation in behalf of the local government unit of Efil.
Okay, miss seconded? Seconded by honorable Noiga. Discussion? Any amendments? Objection? Hearing of the motion is hereby approved. Three, okay. Kindly, kaya nalang, Mr. Flor nga three, separate nga deed of donation sa siya. Pwede siyang iusa. Okay, noted, noted sa Sekretari.
Okay, item H, we have here memorandum of order number 2023/0916 from the Office of the Municipal Mayor addressed to the Vice Mayor, SB Members, Department Heads and Division Chiefs subject attendance to the LGU Efil Public Service Ethics and Accountability Training Program on September 20 to 21 at Chucky's Hotel and Restaurant. This is part of the civil service celebration.
Okay, for your information, please be guided.
September 20 to 21.
Okay, on September 20. Okay, pag uman lang session, mo follow lang ta dito. Okay, next, committee report.
Other matters, committee reports.
Mr. Flor, we are now on the period of committee reports.
Anybody from this honorable chamber who has a committee report, please raise your hand. Honorable Tural... Honorable Tural, by head.
Thank you, Mr. Flor. Good morning. I have one committee report on the Committee on Rules, Ordinances and Resolutions, Committee Report Number 190. The subject is the memorandum of agreement to be entered into by and between the Department of Agrarian Reform, or the DAR, and Local Government Unit of Efil and barangay Gituan, Efil, Sambuanga Cibugay re mandated to participate actively in the implementation of national program and projects in its area of jurisdiction per Local Government Code of 1991. The remarks and recommendations the Committee on Rules, Ordinances and Resolutions to which the above subject matter was referred and is tasked to review the memorandum of agreement of which the objective of this agreement is to put in effect the collaborative effort among government agencies especially the Department of Agrarian Reform and the Local Government Unit of Efil and barangay Local Government Unit of Gituan, Efil, Sambuanga Cibugay Province in providing support services to the agrarian reform communities and its adjoining areas. Thus, the committee find it beneficial to the community of this municipality and appropriate to recommend for the approval of the memorandum of agreement to be entered into by Department of Agrarian Reform, a government agency headed by Secretary Conrado M. Estrada III, tasked to lead the implementation of the comprehensive agrarian reform program with principal office address at DAR Building Electrical Road, Dileman Quezon City as presented by its undersecretary Jeffrey M. Galan with the Local Government Unit of Efil, Sambuanga Cibugay represented by Municipal Mayor Annabel C. Olegario and the Honorable Violeta C. Presno, the punong barangay of Gituan, Efil, Sambuanga Cibugay. With this, Mr. Chair, I move for the adoption of the Committee Report Number 190 of the Committee on Rules, Ordinances and Resolutions.
There's a motion for the adoption of the committee report.
Second, Honorable Chair.
Julie seconded by honorable Chong. Discussion? Any objection? Hearing of the motion is hereby approved.
Mr. Chair, I move for a resolution approving the content of the memorandum of agreement to be entered into by the Department of Agrarian Reform and the Local Government Unit of Efil represented by the Honorable Annabel C. Olegario and barangay Gituan represented by...
and barangay Gituan, represented by barangay captain Violeta Presno. I so move and submit, Mr. Chair.
There's a motion for the approval. Any seconded motion?
Second.
Julie seconded by General Ramos. Discussion? Any amendments? Objection? Hearing of the motion is hereby approved.
Another resolution, Mr. Chair. A resolution giving, giving authority to our local chief executive, the Honorable Anamel C. Olegario to enter into a memorandum of agreement with the Department of Agrarian Reform to sign for and in behalf of the local government unit of Epeel. I so move, Mr. Chair.
Okay, it has been moved. Any seconded motion? Julie seconded by General Ramos. Discussion? Any amendments? Objection? Hearing of the motion is hereby approved.
Another committee report, Mr. Chair, on the Committee on Appropriation, Committee Report Number One Nine One. The subject is the barangay supplemental budget number zero two dash two zero twenty-three of barangay Bangkerohan amounting to hundred thirty thousand pesos and barangay Buluan amounting to six hundred ninety-five thousand nine hundred fifty-four pesos. The Committee on Appropriation to which was referred the barangay supplemental budget number zero two dash twenty twenty-three of barangay Bangkerohan and barangay Buluan of this municipality for review, evaluation and approval. The said barangay supplemental budget twenty twenty-three has been referred to, to the local finance committee through the municipal budget officer for technical review and preliminary review. After review, it is hereby declared operative in its entirety upon its approval subject to the posting requirements under section fifty-nine of RA seventy-one sixty and further subject to the conditions cited in the local finance committee review. In the implementation of its budget, the local government unit must ascertain adherence to the fundamental principles enumerated in section three oh five of the code. It is understood that the review action does not authorize any item of appropriation that is specifically prohibited by or inconsistent with the provisions of law. The committee hereby recommends for its approval and provided that compliance with the foregoing in the execution of the budget shall be the sole responsibility of the implementing barangay government using the standard guidelines procedures in the budget execution phase prescribed under the budget civil service laws, budgeting, accounting and auditing rules and regulations. I move, Mr. Chair, for the adoption of this committee report number one nine one of the Committee on Appropriation.
Okay, there's a motion for the adoption of the committee report?
Second, Honorable Chair.
Seconded by General Chong. Discussion? Objection? Hearing of the motion is hereby approved.
Another resolution, Mr. Chair, declaring operative in its entirety the barangay supplemental budget number zero two dash twenty twenty-three of barangay Bangkerohan amounting to one hundred thirty thousand and barangay Buluan, six hundred ninety-five thousand nine hundred fifty-four pesos. I submit and so move, Mr. Chair.
Okay, any seconded motion?
Second, Honorable Chair.
Okay, seconded by General Chong. Discussion? Any amendments? Objection? Hearing of the motion is hereby approved.
Another committee report number one nine two, still on the Committee on Appropriation. The subject is barangay supplemental budget number zero three dash twenty twenty-three of barangay Buluan amounting to three hundred thirty-nine thousand five hundred seventeen and seventy-one centavos. The Committee on Appropriation to which was referred the barangay supplemental budget number zero three dash twenty twenty-three of barangay Buluan of this municipality for review, evaluation and approval. The said barangay supplemental budget number twenty twenty-three has been referred to the local finance committee through the municipal budget officer for technical review and preliminary review. After review, it is hereby declared operative in its entirety upon its approval subject to the posting requirements under section fifty-nine of RA seventy-one sixty and further subject to the conditions cited in the local finance committee review. In, in the implementation of this budget, the LGU must ascertain adherence to the fundamental principles enumerated in section three oh five of the code. It is understood that the review action does not authorize any item of appropriation that is specifically prohibited by or inconsistent with the provisions of law. The committee hereby recommends for its approval provided that compliance with the foregoing in the execution of the budget shall be the sole responsibility of the implementing barangay government using the standard guidelines procedures in the budget execution phase prescribed under the budget civil service laws, budgeting, accounting and auditing rules and regulations. With this, Mr. Chair, I move for the adoption of the Committee Report Number One Nine Two of the Committee on Appropriation.
Any seconded motion for the adoption of the committee report?
Second, Honorable Chair.
Okay, seconded by General Chong. Discussion? Any amendments? Objection? Hearing of the motion is hereby approved.
Another resolution, ma'am, Mr. Chair. Declaring operative in its entirety, the supplemental, barangay supplemental budget number zero three dash twenty twenty-three of barangay Buluan amounting to three hundred thirty-nine thousand five hundred seventeen pesos and seventy-one centavos. I submit and so move, Mr. Chair.
Okay, it has been moved. Any second to the motion? Julie seconded by General Garcia. Discussion? Any amendments? Objection? Hearing of the motion is hereby approved.
That would be all, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Any more committee report?
Yes, Mr. Chair, uh, I have one committee report. Uh, committee report number one nine three, committee referral as regards an endorsement from the Office of the Ombudsman for appropriate action with respect to a verified complaint filed by barangay Kagawad, Honorable Elizabeth Ison, Honorable Percy Valcudal, Honorable Henio Peralta, Honorable Felipe Salinas, Honorable Elton John Makashar, Joylyn Abrahano, Jurson de La Serna, Angelie Guerrero, Carlos Fernandez, Dara Elaine Rickford, uh, Ronald Ureta and Benzar Moxin against barangay captain of Poblacion, Honorable Jocelyn Ferrer for violation of laws and rules relevant in cash examination. A committee meeting was conducted in compliance with ordinance number twelve dash zero five four dash ninety-six last September twelve, twenty twenty-three at SB Session Hall. Committee findings and recommendation. This committee finds that there is an upcoming local election for barangay officials on October thirty. Section sixty-two C of the Republic Act seventy-one sixty provides that no investigation shall be held within ninety days immediately prior to any local election and no preventive suspension shall be imposed within that said period. With the limitations provided by the law, this committee is hereby prohibited to take further action with regard to the said above mentioned administrative complaints filed against barangay captain, Honorable Jocelyn Ferrer. This committee recommends that the case be referred back to the Office of the Ombudsman and a copy of the committee report furnished for attachment. I move for the adoption of committee report number one nine three.
There's a motion for the adoption of the committee report? Julie seconded by General Noiga. Discussion? Any objection? Hearing of the motion is hereby approved. Anymore? Anybody would like to render their respective committee reports?
Any more committee report? Since nobody is raising, Honorable Chair.
Mr. Flor, may, we are now in the period of other matters?
We are now on other matters.
Any concerns, anything that you'd like to discuss? Okay, there's an announcement coming from our, uh, Madam Secretary. Uh, representatives and personnel coming from the National Library will be coming over, uh, particularly here at our Session Hall. Tomorrow, uh, two, two o'clock in the afternoon, so snacks are also being prepared by our secretariat for our visitors, so every, everyone is encouraged to be here. Two, alas dos, so. Okay, and also, no, for the information of everybody, uh, atong, our submission of our entry for the National Local Legislative Award will be on Friday. It will be submitted on Friday, so all the, uh, kani mga gipangkuha nila karoon money ang gipangsubmit. So later, siguro, this afternoon, after the crew of, uh, madini sila ang MTP, MTP Studios Epeel, no, money sila ang ato ang uh, ihangyo o ihire nga mo cover sa proceeding sa session o kunsa'y mga features na sa Sangguyang Bayan of Epeel, so sila ang kuwan. So ato na tao nun niya ang ilang finished product. Okay, anymore? Ano pa ilahing announcement? Okay, so recess for one minute. Um, ulang iinform ang MTP nga right after this, ang, panah, ang adjournment. Ready, ready lang ah, cover tapagad. Okay, okay, back to order. Okay, session be back to order. Okay, anymore announcements? Uh, anything that you'd like to discuss before we give the floor to the Honorable Noiga for the adjournment? Okay, uh, General Noiga?
I move to adjourn, Honorable Chair.
Okay, there's a motion for the adjournment? Okay, Julie seconded, the sixty-first regular session is now adjourned. Thank you and good morning.